Let's get this meeting started. Let's first rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance students by the United States of America.
Excuse me, Republic.
Republicans. Honored nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as eternal.
All right, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:35, regular school board meeting here at the high school. First, looking for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Next, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from November 27th?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any corrections or discussion stemming from those minutes? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving those minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next looking, it's public comment time. We'll start with our in-person audience. Is there anyone here from the public who has a comment? Yes, please stand up and identify your question.
Roy Newton, Member of the Press. Um, my question is, um, has the, uh, school board, uh, school released the documents, uh, so ordered by the judge?
Uh, I guess, Roy, as a reminder, it's public comment. We're not, uh, required to answer a question. Uh, I can tell you that I believe we're going to discuss that issue in executive session later on in this meeting. So if you were to stick around until after that executive session, you might have an answer to your question. Okay? Anyone else in person, public comment? All right, anyone online attending with a public comment? I don't see anyone. All right. Next, central office report, which was included in our packets. Does anyone have any questions for the administrators? About the contents of the central office report? Do any administrators wish to highlight anything that they had included in that report? Chris Cole.
Um, I highlighted just the renovation project that's ongoing here at the high school, middle school. If anybody wants to stay around after the meeting, I'd be happy to show you where we're at, or if you want to take a tour, just let me know after the meeting.
Would that be the sewage pumper or the locker room?
I think you want us to do it. The locker room, Brian.
Locker room? Cool. All right, hearing nothing further, we'll move on. Thank you very much for preparing that, administrators. All right, the finance committee met beforehand. I will turn it over to Glenn, the chair, for updates.
All right, um, first item then is to approve the warrants. So I will make a motion to approve payments in the amount of one million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve capital reserve expenses in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Any questions on capital reserve? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Make a motion to approve food service, uh, expenses in the amount of five hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second.
Questions on food service? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, make a motion to approve grant expenditures in the amount of forty-five thousand, eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Any questions on grant expenditures? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve high school student activity expenses in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cents.
Second.
Questions on high school student activity? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And make a motion to approve elementary student activity expense in the amount of five hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
Questions on elementary student activity? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let me do the question here next, then you can use it to a annual discussion.
All right, so I'm going to skip down to item three under the finance committee, and it's the approval of the annual financial management questionnaire. Uh, I believe everybody got a copy of that in their packet. Cheryl has signed it, and when the board approves it, then the board chair will sign it. So I would make a motion to approve the annual financial management questionnaire, uh, as presented.
Second.
Questions for Cheryl regarding that questionnaire or its purpose? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, of accepting and allowing me to sign, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Chris, can you pass that to Cheryl, please?
So now, um, fiscal year twenty-five budget. Um, as you're aware, we've been working through things, uh, with the budget. Numbers keep coming in. One major change, uh, we've talked about that repeatedly, has been the way that, um, our equalized pupil count is looked at. And because we are a, um, kind of a, an area with high-need students, um, a lot of students living in, uh, lower-income houses and everything, the state has redone the weighting average. And when you look at the formulas, um, because of the change in the weighting average, we have basically gained about a thousand equalized pupils. When it comes to figuring our educational expenses, um, so, um, as compared to last year. So, using last year's numbers, um, we had, uh, an expense of...
Well, see, that's actually last year's, but this is last year's based on the new D, A D M.
So, last year, our, our expenses per student ba- on the old, um, equalized pupil count were eighteen thousand, one hundred and three dollars and six cents per student. With our proposed budget where it stands, uh, this is not final, our expenditures per student, um, are eleven thousand, nineteen dollars and fifty-three cents. Our tax, our equalized tax rate last year before any, um, common level appraisal adjustments were, uh, applied was a dollar seventeen, uh, two, twenty-three. And as it stands right now, um, depending upon, we're, we're sitting here with four. We still are kind of looking at four possible scenarios. And it has to do with if we're going to ask the taxpayers to transfer some of fiscal year twenty-four surplus into a reserve fund to, for maintenance issues. But we're looking at roughly, uh, eleven thousand, or a tax rate of between a dollar sixteen up to a dollar nineteen. And that's the equalized district-wide before any CLA adjustments are put in. We have not received any CLA numbers from the state yet. Those hopefully will be here by the end of the month. So we are heading, you know, we have another meeting coming up, uh, early January that we will hopefully have those numbers, so we can really start to look and see what the impact of the budget will be on people's taxes. Some of the highlights were that, um, in basically graphic two A, we have increased, uh, the amount in the budget for maintenance, um, by five, from five hundred thousand up to, we've moved that up to a million dollars. And as you're aware, um, Chris has identified roughly eighteen million dollars worth of maintenance issues that need to be addressed over the next few years. So if we don't start addressing some of those issues now, the costs are just going to go up exponentially. There is, there was a, um, an SAP position that was grant-funded that we are adding into the budget. So that was roughly a sixty-two thousand dollar position. Um, we've decreased the amount for athletic transport. Um, we've actually off, also added, um, an additional fifty thousand dollars of funding to support the summer programs for the Boys and Girls Clubs programs. Revenue, on the revenue side, um, we still have not received numbers as far as, uh, state aid for transportation. And there are two other, uh, numbers based for reimbursements, uh, for special ed that we are still waiting on, um, from the state. So there will be more info to follow. So any questions? Sure, Christian.
For the maintenance, you mentioned that it was like eighteen million in the next few years. Is that three years, five years?
It's eighteen million probably over the next five to ten years. There's some things that would be way at the end of that timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
But there's, there's a pretty good, um, as we told the finance committee, we're working at the building and grounds committee. I'm kind of fine-tuning that list.
Yeah. Thanks.
There's a meeting next Monday that you're welcome to attend.
Okay.
Where we'll get into some more detail about, uh, our deferred maintenance projects.
Okay.
Couple questions. So with Orwell and whoever else, I forget it is, that's getting their reappraisals this year, when is that going to affect the CLA?
Next year. So it'll be fiscal year twenty-six, uh, because those numbers are not, won't be finalized. And the other thing is that the CLA is a three-year average.
Right.
My question, and I, I guess I don't have an answer to that yet, is if you, if a town reappraises, does that reset your CLA number so that you're basically starting anew? Or do the two previous years still factor into that?
I think it's a complete reappraisal, so...
I'm hoping that that's going to start...
I think it establishes a new CLA. Cause usually you see a big change in them. I think that's...
You don't have to recast the previous two years?
No, I think it establishes a new CLA percent based on that reappraisal.
So in that case, it wouldn't be a three-year, it'd be just a one-year. It's a one, it's a one, it's a one-year right there, and then the next year would be two years, and then once you're three years out. Interesting.
Yeah, that's a good question.
That's, I don't have the...
I don't know exactly.
So please don't hold me to that, John.
Okay, so question two here.
How many properties are sold in Orwell, like, even here? This last year has been, it's been quite a few. Did you say like twenty? More than that.
Many over asking price.
Yeah, like double, and, you know, we've had some, uh...
And the pricing wasn't shy.
I think, and, and I'll be honest, and I've, I've had those conversations with the listers, and maybe that way, I don't know about other towns in the district because they don't have a lot of ag property, but ag property has been greatly underappraised, and it's selling for stupid money. Stuff with development rights sold, so you can't ever build on it, is still bringing thirty-five hundred an acre. And it's being, it's in the books for four hundred an acre. So that's really having effects on CLAs. Orwell has had two farms sell this year, so... Yeah. Are people buying then to continue the farming operation or to just... So one is somebody who was renting that farm and is going to continue farming. Most of these are being bought, it's, um, as consolidation takes place. Farms are buying the neighboring farm for the land, they're bulldozing buildings because they don't want to pay taxes on them, they don't want to have to deal with tenants, and they just want the acres for more management to grow crops, so they're buying. So the towns end up losing tax base when a lot of these play, transactions occur because all those buildings are gone. So...
So my second question. So from the numbers you just gave us, so this year in the warning, instead of we're spending eighteen thousand a student, we're going to say we're spending eleven thousand something a...
No.
Okay, then I'm missing something here.
So when this act came out, one of the things that they've done is, um, how much you're spending per student is no longer part of the warning.
Okay.
The only thing that will be on the warning is what our total expenditure budget is.
Okay.
It has nothing to do, it does not state whether it's an increase, a decrease, or anything. And it's a five-year, um, and it's in effect until 2030. Um, as this whole new, um, equalization piece takes, kicks in, um, so that part won't be on there. Because, you know, we've been kind of, in the past, we've had years where our expenditure budget was actually a decrease from the previous year. But because you also had fewer students, the way that it was written was that your, your budget was going up, your spending per student. And they've deleted that out of the language for the warning. You know, and that's the other piece, I don't know if people that aren't on the finance community are aware, but with this new education, student weighting, is that all towns are now required to completely reappraise every six years. So that keeps these CLAs from getting way out of whack. So... Anything else, John?
That's enough.
There'll be more to come, um, as we get some more finalized numbers from the state. So yeah, I guess the timeline would be, um, you know, we're expecting CLA numbers, uh, in a month. We have another finance committee meeting, um, the second Monday of January, January eighth. I imagine at that meeting, the finance committee will be fairly close to endorsing a budget, which would then be approved by the full board two weeks later.
On the twenty...
On the twenty-second. Which we have to warn, what, six weeks in advance of the, the March vote, something to that effect?
Yeah, well, essentially, it, yeah, thirty to forty.
Any other questions for Glenn, finance-related?
So in this, I mean, and there's, there's been a bunch of things in the, in the press about, um, skyrocketing tax rates. And that definitely is going to be the case in communities that are, I guess what in, under the old terms, might have been called gold towns, or towns with very high tax bases, low student numbers, um...
I think it's, it's going to be the towns, so as you mentioned, we're advantaged because our, the number of pupils, our, our pupils are increasing because of the change in the weights. And just like ours are increasing, on the other side of that, there are other school districts whose pupil count is decreasing. So they're disadvantaged by that change, and so they're dealing with a whole different set of dynamics than we are. In, in this case, uh, it presents some opportunities for this district.
But again, it is a statewide educational system, so for all those towns that are disadvantaged and are facing the problems that fortunately we aren't here, where their spending per pupil is going way up, you know, they're, they're subject to certain guardrails and caps, you know, the, the yield is going to be under further pressure to go down to sufficiently fund the educational fund, which is, and going to circle back and potentially impact us. So it's a, kind of a, just a vicious cycle that keeps going round and round. Because we're looking, it's, was it over a five thousand dollar decrease in what they're recommending for the yield?
Yeah.
And so, and as we know, when the yield, as the yield goes up, tax rates go down, and when the yield goes down, tax rates go up. So that's going to have a major impact in, in some communities. We used the recommended number in our preliminary calculations, um, they've dropped that down to ninety-five hundred dollars. So... Hopefully there are no surprises to come out.
I mean, we all share in everybody's costs, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, is that, um, that new hundred and eighty million or two hundred million dollar high school being built in Burlington, we're all going to pay, pay a piece of that, sitting here. Everybody in this room's going to pay for part of that, so...
All right, any other questions, finance-related? All right, thank you, Glenn. All right, agenda item number seven is teen center collaboration. I guess that's going to be Mr. Worthing. Come on, come on down, Ben. Front and center.
You're the next contestant.
So I guess I have kind of a, sort of a brief update. First is, put together a little presentation, just to show mostly, uh, a student survey, but also just to take an opportunity to fill you in on what the committee has been discussing and where we're at in this process. We are taking it slow because we want to be very methodical in how we do this. The thought amongst the whole team is if we move too quickly, there, there's a higher chance for potential missteps. So, uh, if you'd like, Walter. So the, the immediate, immediate, sorry, committee is myself, Deb Robinson, Jeff Jackson, who's from Slate Valley Cares, and Nicole Rice, who's, uh, with the Boys and Girls Club. We've also been bringing in some other folks on the next slide who have been coming in just to, uh, give us some input, give us some expertise. Been talking with Grant Smith even to, today about some grant funding that, that we could potentially access. Uh, we've been talking with folks over at, uh, Castleman University about how we might be able to bring in college students that could do internships with, with some of our students. So we've been looking at a, a whole bunch of different options. Uh, our first step, you know, once we've established this, was to really go back to the students though, and do some surveys. We had, uh, about two hundred and thirty students complete the survey. We're really looking to capitalize on the grade seven through ten. Once you hit eleventh grade, you get that driver's license, uh, teen center isn't as high of a priority necessarily. And so out of our survey, about eighty-three percent of them were grade seven through ten, so we were really happy about that. We also looked at across the, uh, district, each town. Uh, so we got a pretty, I, I would assume this is a pretty, uh, even distribution of the demographics from each town. Uh, where it gets, I think, a little bit more exciting is in the next slide. When you look at this, this is, uh, interest in the teen center. You know, some students have a lot of opportunities between athletics and different clubs, and they're just, you know, simply aren't really interested in the teen center. When you look at those that are interested, or might be interested, we're looking at approximately ninety-six students just from our survey, which is pretty exciting. I, that's a, a substantial amount of students here, uh, from those that took the survey that would be potentially interested in the teen center. So we feel like the, the interest in the school, from the middle school and the high school, is, is certainly there. Go ahead, Walter. Uh, this one, we were asking a question more around, if, if you were interested, would you be interested in being a part of a youth committee? That would really be the driving voice of a teen center. And again, a, a small percentage is actually a really great benefit. We have about thirty students that said they'd absolutely be interested in being on a youth council. That would be the voice of a teen center. Uh, my experience working with kids, if you have thirty students on a, a committee together, you're probably not going to get a lot done. But that's actually a pretty high number, and I would expect that to drop. And that, that leaves us in a place where I feel like we actually have some interest, even in that leadership role, that would really be a great voice for a teen center. So I, I have, we have other questions, and I'll pass these out. Some of these, I won't go over all of them, but the questions were more around, what would you like in a teen center? So we're getting everything from video games, basketball, juggling is on there. A lot of it is food, they like to be able to cook, be able to eat. And of course, most of it is just hanging out with friends and having a safe space to be able to hang out together. So this is some of those responses. Couple extras, if you'd like, any over here. So there's two questions on this. One was generally like, what would you like as, see at a teen center? What would, what would be the activities? That's the first several pages. There's a lot of repetition, I didn't go through to eliminate that. But, uh, you know, there's definitely a lot of interest around sports, recreational activities, the arts. The second question that was asked on here that is on the back page, last page, was just a general, any other comments? Uh, there's one I thought was really interesting, and this is just my opinion, but I want to bring your attention to it. See if I can find it really quickly. It's the second one down, "Don't have a bunch of adults and rules so people can relax", which i- is, to me, is kind of, you know, working with kids, I thought was sort of funny. But as you work with kids, you really read into what they mean by that. And what I'm hearing students say is, I mean, obviously there's going to be adults, there's going to be rules, but they want something where they can exercise their voice. They want something where they can be a part of a decision-making process to build something for them that supports them. So I think the interest in the teen center is, is there. And, and our team is really looking at that as a starting spot. Where we've slowed down, a few things I think are of particular interest for the board is, one, where does the funding come from and who is in control of that funding? As a school, we were really clear in saying, we don't have the capacity to, to be in control of that funding. We really want to be a resource and a support to that. Uh, in terms of how do we help organize it, how do we get the students involved, how do we get our own staff involved that might want to be a part of it? How do we help with grant writing, those types of pieces? But we didn't feel like the capacity was there for us to take on the, the brunt of that. Uh, Jeff Jackson over at Slate Valley Cares did say that it really fits with what they see their role in their programming, and has offered to be the point person to the funding component. So that's kind of a hurdle that we've recently jumped over, and we've been having a lot of conversations around that piece. Uh, another thing that was really great information, talking with a lot of statewide groups that we've met with, and we were stuck on this for a while, is if you have a teen center, you need a location. Where's your location? And when we started looking into locations, we were talking upwards to fifty thousand dollars a year in rent, and that's not even getting into the utilities, uh, all, all those other components. So it really felt like a hard, a hard reach. And what was told to us through their experience with these other groups, uh, Matt Wolf was a great resource, was that you don't really need a space to get started. And that's kind of what our drive is right now. We're looking at funding to do some pop-up events, so we don't necessarily need a space. Instead, what we do is we focus on the programming itself. Like what activities do the kids want? How do we bring that to them without, uh, taking on the responsibility of renting a space? And the goal is, how do we, maybe over a period of year or two, establish that this is a true need, uh, establish that there's proof in the, in the product, and then start reaching for maybe a, a loftier goal of, can we look for space? Uh, can we find space that's affordable? Can we find ways of connecting that space to other community? Can we find ways of connecting that space to other community members? Again, Matt Wolfe said, you know, there's some towns that share spaces with businesses. So there's a lot of options. Our goal was to kind of really slow that down, say, let's first just establish that there's a need, that students will get involved, and do this in a way where we can have events maybe down at the park, or events at the high school, or events in different locations. And our focus is on the programming of the events rather than all that money going towards finding a space. So, go ahead, sorry.
No, sorry. I just wanted to add and just back up a little bit and just talk a little bit about where this whole initiative, this kind of grassroots effort, came from. Early in the spring, we were having significant issues with student behavior in the community, outside, outside of school, particularly in the towns of Fairhaven and Pulteney, that was spilling over into the school day. And they were pretty concerning behaviors. So the towns of Fairhaven and Pulteney got together, and I really want to commend Ben for this because as a resident of Pulteney and, you know, at the time the principal here, he really spearheaded that effort, effort of getting the two towns together to really look at this third space for youth. Since then, we've kind of separated from Pulteney and, you know, this, and we've really decided what we can do locally in Slate Valley, but we really wanted to make sure that it was a community initiative and not another initiative that's being driven by the school. We certainly want to be partners in that, and still, Ben has taken on a lot of the bulk of that initiative. But it really is a community project. So I just wanted to back up and add that for context.
And we worked really closely for several months with, so there's members from our community here and members in Pulteney. There's a lot of excitement over there. They've actually, I believe, are going to be making a pretty significant change in their elementary program, bringing the Boys and Girls Club in in the next month or two, I believe. But we did come to a point where we all agreed, like, with a teen center, you know, it's a seven or eight mile difference between Fairhaven and Pulteney, it might as well be 250 miles for a teenager. We really need to focus on individual towns based on just that component. And so they're continuing with their work, and I still do talk with Joe DeBones about it, and I know he's moving forward with folks over there, same we are here.
Yes. Are we doing Boys and Girls Clubs just during the summer?
No. So I'm after school.
So I'm just wondering, are we duplicating our efforts?
Well, right now, Boys and Girls Club only goes to sixth grade, so this, we're really talking about seventh grade and up.
And Nicole Rice has shared that, you know, part of the overall philosophy of Boys and Girls Club is to address pre-teen and teen, is there's a really high need for that K-6, I think, in all the communities throughout here, and that seems to have become a part of their focus. But she's kind of acknowledged that they would really like to push into the teenage.
Well, the thing with the Boys and Girls Clubs is they're in the different towns, so transportation isn't as much of an issue. Sounds like it would be an issue with the teen center. I mean, yeah, there's Pulteney, but, you know, we've got Benson and Orwell.
So one of the, one of the thoughts that we discussed, and this is, again, it's so preliminary, it's really hard to make this concrete, but one of the thoughts was if we had a local teen center eventually in this area, how would we maybe connect that with a late bus run to be able to open up the opportunities to Benson, Orwell, Castleton, so on? So we can try to maximize that as much as possible. I think we're a long ways away from that at this point, but it's something that we have talked about.
And would you think about doing it in the summer? Or are we a ways away from that?
Well, and that's another reason why I think it was really important to, with the capacity of schools and after-school programming, to see if someone else would be the point person around the funding, because the goal would be that, since, you know, Slate Valley Cares is obviously 365, that they would be overseeing that component. And so it would be something over the summer. I think that is a long-term goal. It would be a year-round.
Am I allowed to ask a question now?
Are you allowed to ask a question now? Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
The subject is on my mind in terms of if there was a teen center in Fairhaven a few years ago, I think it went on for about three or four years or five years. And the final outcome of that was that drugs are involved among the kids. So if you're doing something like this, you really need to concentrate on the supervision. And it's not going to be just one person supervising. You've got to have a couple people you already know within the school type of supervision you need. If you're doing this, you really need strong supervision, not just one day, but every day that that teen center is open.
Yep, I agree.
Any other board members have thoughts, questions for Ben about the collaborative here, teen center?
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on now to item number eight, which is an action item, is to adopt the following policies, F3 and B5. They were warned at the previous school board meeting. I would take a motion to adopt, and if there's any discussion, that can be done within the motion.
Make a motion to adopt F3 and B5?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Does anyone have any questions about either of those policies?
I guess, yes. I guess my only question is, you know, I understand the unlawful harassment policy. It just kind of boggles my mind. I don't understand number 10, the genetic information. First of all, how would one come up with that to harass someone about it? Or is this like a VSB template or statewide?
The VSB template, yeah, from the attorneys. Yeah, I mean, it could be, I mean, there's all sorts of genetic testing now. People could disclose that even to a colleague and then, you know.
That's a different thing and more a HIPAA violation than a harassment thing.
Any other questions? Anybody else, questions on either of these policies, discussion? All right, hearing nothing further, all those in favor of adopting policy F3 and B5, please say aye.
Aye.
And is anyone opposed? All right, those both have been adopted. All right, next on the agenda is we have an application for a new club. Appears to be a cooking club, grades first through sixth. The school is.
Bentham.
Amy, do you want to speak to this at all? Come on forward, please.
So last year, our nurse at the time put together the MAC grant, and we came up after talking with students in something they'd be interested in. So they wanted to try a cooking club. So this would be funded through the MAC grant, and we're going to run two separate sessions, one for first through third graders and then one for fourth through sixth graders. And if it's something they really enjoy, it would be something we'd like to offer next year.
So your request again is to allow the club to move forward, not a funding request?
Correct.
All right. We can make a motion, and then we can ask further questions about accepting the club?
I make a motion to accept the club as presented.
Are there any additional questions or discussion points regarding the proposed cooking club at Benson?
I did just have one question. At one point in time, it said six weeks, and then at one point in time, it said four weeks, and I was just a little bit confused. There was some writing, I don't have a copy of it.
Yeah, we're going to do eight weeks. We had to look at the interest that kids can hold over time. We also looked at other events kids are in. Some are playing some basketball. And then what we did is we tried to extend the time, so the club is actually like an hour and a half long, so it gives them plenty of time. Mrs. Howard and I kind of worked through some meal ideas she had, so they'll be creating a beverage, kind of a main dish, and then something for dessert. So it's just trying to figure out that, that right amount of time for kids to stay interested in, not run into other things, and to make sure that we can get two full sessions in for all the kids interested.
Have to keep applying for the grant?
Every year, we get to apply for a MAC grant, and we try to do something different every year. So we always ask the kids and get a lot of input from the staff, too. In the past, we've had a yogi come in, and we did eight weeks of yoga for K through six. So really, it's, what is the interest of the kids?
So it might not be a cooking club next year?
No, but if they do enjoy the cooking club, that might become just a regular club. Then we fund through the stipends that we have at school.
Any other questions for Amy? All right, all those in favor of approving the cooking club, please say aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose?
Thank you.
Good luck. We always accept, you know, samples here.
Seven other meetings at Benson.
All right, number 10 is Castleton Select Board Response. I'm not sure if board members were part of the email chain about this topic.
It's in their packet.
Okay, so it was included in your packet, but basically recently was brought to our attention that in the town of Castleton, there was a little note that accompanied all the property tax bills that went out in early August to the effect of, you know, the reason your taxes are going up this year has to do with the educational tax rate. And so that was brought to our attention. We were just wondering why that was a notice that went along with the property tax bills, who drafted it, who authorized it. You know, naturally, we kind of felt that that was a little bit combative in nature. Basically, the municipality blaming the school district for increasing taxes. You know, as we all know, that the equalized tax rate for our school districts, the things that we can control, has been on a pretty steady decline over the last four to five years. The real reason that the educational component, that tax rates are going up, is due to the CLA impacts, the fact that so many properties in Castleton are selling above their assessed value. So Julie, myself, Brooke, we're just having an email exchange about how best to respond to this perceived misinformation, whether we wanted to make a statement, whether we wanted to send out information to all the residents in Castleton to clarify that remark, whether we wanted to attend a select board meeting to address the matter in person. So I guess, Julie, I'll let you take it from here.
Sure. So they have the exact same select board, their meetings are exactly the same days as ours, so there's no way we can attend. But fortunately, in December, since the fourth Monday is Christmas, they have changed their meeting to Thursday, December 21st, which would then allow us to attend. So the idea was, is to either, A, ask to be on their agenda and get approval from the board that says that Tim, Julie, Tony may speak from the board, or, and to be on their agenda to do so specifically, or just to go to public comment and not try to, in my opinion, engage in dialogue with them about the issue, but just kind of state our place, say we'd like, you know, to have this recorded in the, you know, the kind of the public record. So those are kind of our two options for attending. And I do like the idea of sending something out. I think it's an opportunity not only to, I don't know, particularly correct, but to inform what the education, because the, I don't know if you guys actually read the statement right, but it's super general. And so just to inform the statement, to clarify the statement, you know, the education tax is why your overall property tax has increased, is the statement that's on there. And then in the paper, the statement was, you know, probably expecting, the word that is bothersome is "another sizable increase," right? And when we look over time, our tax rate has gone down the past four years, like steadily, from 1.45 to 1.17, blah, 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 little, you know, points on the end. But just so, so more about just kind of educating or communicating. I'm also, I also do not want to be in a finger-pointing battle with my town, right? The whole goal is to work together to bring people to our area, not to finger-point as to who's doing the worst job at what, which is what it felt like. So, I don't know, I think we're just kind of asking for your feedback and kind of how you think about how, supporting us and how we'd like to handle this.
Thoughts or comments?
Personally, I don't.
Sheena, what do you think?
I feel like if they're providing incorrect information, that they should be the ones to notify the taxpayers what, how they were incorrect in their information.
They do not believe, they do not, they do not believe they're incorrect, Christina. That is part of the issue.
They or one person?
Well, that is another good question, Tim, because we're not clear on that answer, whether it is one person or they as a select board.
Did they, during one of their meetings, vote on whether to provide such a statement on those tax bills?
No, they did not, Glenn.
It was done without the knowledge of the collective body.
Or the town manager.
So I think that that gives good cause for why somebody should attend one of their meetings, if possible, and obviously, it sounds like it is possible. And who better than the Castleton reps?
Who better than Tony? I know she's not here today.
I know. She's not here, so we couldn't elect her.
See, you said that, she just.
I heard that, Tim.
That's a lot. Tony did that. Tony did that.
But I do think that that's a really important thing, and I agree that I don't, or I agree with one of your options, Julie, that I don't think you should be adversarial about it. I think it should be an opportunity to give information, and however we could present it, that could also be part of what we do on our little road shows there or whatever. You know, it would give us that opportunity. I think that's a great one to, you know, kind of a little segue into, oh, well, this is what, you know, what we're going to be talking about at our road shows or whatever.
At a listening tour.
What do we call them?
Listening tours.
Listening tours. There we go. The listening tour, so.
Have you been watching too many antique road shows?
I think so, yeah.
Well, I guess we don't really need a motion, but I guess is the board in general in favor of the collection of myself, Julie, and Tony, the three representatives from Castleton, making best efforts to get to that December 21 meeting and making a non-combative, neutral statement of reconciliation regarding this matter?
Yes. I want, I want, like, I want the right information to be in the public record, is what I really am looking for, right? Because people do go on and read minutes of meetings, select board meetings, school board meetings, and I really think, and they videotape them, too, right? So to have correct information out there, understanding, I think is really important, because when you read that, it's super misleading. And that was what's bothersome.
All right, so we're good on that? Any other comments? All right, thanks for bringing that forward, Julie. And I guess the three of us will just communicate here over the next several days to draft a strategy and a statement.
Sounds good.
All right, number 11 is board member resignation, and to follow, the possibility of appointing someone to take this person's place. So the resignation involves a member from Benson, Karina. This is her first year on the board, and I guess it's not her thing, as I just learned. Thank you, Amy. Sounds like she wants to be a yogi, or she already is a yogi, right?
Yeah. Could be. Could be. Going to be running our theater club.
Oh, okay. All right, so we have some action to accept the resignation of Karina. It would be effective the first of the year, so she would be able to participate in committee meetings now through the balance of the year, or if there were another board meeting, she would obviously be a member of the board through the month of December. Is there a motion to accept her resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Peter?
No, she was looking like she didn't catch who.
Who was? Second.
Oh, okay. No questions or discussion?
I just want to say that she really, really was invested in the beginning, but through various things, it just became too stressful for her, and she and I.
Peter?
No, she was looking like she didn't catch who.
Who was?
Second.
No questions or discussion?
I just want to say that she really, really was invested in the beginning, but through various things, it just became too stressful for her. And she and I reached out to each other a number of times. And she's very sad to leave because she was very interested in being part of this whole community that she moved into. So I'm really happy that she's going to be doing theater club and all that events. And then hopefully, we'll be working together there.
All righty, all those in favor of accepting the resignation of board member Karina, effective first of the year, please say aye.
Aye.
One opposed? All right, and to the business of appointing a new member, I think we have two people here this evening potentially who are interested, is that right? Okay. So we did advertise for the open seat, we advertised where, Brooke?
Rutland Herald on the website, social media.
Okay, and we received two letters of interest?
Correct.
Okay. So our requirements as a board are to question and hear the interest from these applicants. And we're required to appoint someone to fill that seat, is that correct?
Yes, it would be until the next election, so it's not really a long, long term.
Do we have the right to pass or no, we're required to fill the seats?
You're supposed to, you're supposedly required within 30 days. But as you know, we have three West Haven seats who have been open for years, so.
So I think there's two candidates here, I'll open the floor to each of them. They can read the letter that they provided. Due to a potential conflict of interest, I am going to leave the room. Let me know when the decision's been made. Okay. So I'll let, I'll open the floor to the candidates. They can introduce themselves, they can read their letter of interest, they can tell us a little bit about themselves. We'll go one at a time. I'll allow the board to ask some follow-up questions. And this will all be done in open session. After the candidates have made their presentation, we will take a vote, make a motion to appoint, I guess we'll probably, how do we do that? Would we take like a straw vote first, or then like a motion to appoint that person? Or would there be just motions made by someone for the candidate that they prefer?
When I got on, Tim, what we did was we passed out sticky notes.
Yeah.
And everybody wrote a name on the sticky note and then Brooke read them all and then said this was the person that we wanted.
Yep.
That's what happened when.
I can go get those.
Okay.
You don't have to have sticky notes.
Well, I know, but.
Back in the old days.
All right, so we don't need to wait for Brooke. So I'm not sure who is who. How about the lady in the red sweater? Why don't you introduce yourself and tell the PR?
My name is Jamie King. There's more people here than I expected, so I'm a little bit nervous. I am new to town, moved to Benson a couple of months ago. And I am very excited to meet everybody and to hopefully become a part of the community. I have three children in the Slate Valley School System, one here at the, well, the middle school technically. She's in seventh grade. And I have two sons over at Benson Village School. And I'm very interested in becoming a part of the school system.
Great, are there any questions for Jamie?
No, thank you for the letter.
Actually, can I ask, I, my plan to read it, I was going to read it off my phone. However, I didn't realize there is no service in here.
You can use the wifi, yes.
Okay, yes, otherwise, you have, do you have?
I have a copy right here on paper, if you want it.
You got it.
Otherwise, I was gonna ask.
Could've used John's too, but.
If I went out and just opened it and came back, but this is.
You can also log on to wifi guest. There is a guest one that you don't have to put in a password.
Thank you.
Look at all those options.
Hey, you're so helpful. This is much easier though.
Want to read it or no?
I wasn't sure if I.
No, we're gonna go one at a time.
You tell me what you would like.
Read it, read it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
To the Slate Valley Unified School District Board of Education, good morning. It has come to my attention that a temporary position on the Slate Valley Unified School District School Board has become vacant. I am submitting a formal letter of interest to be considered for this position. As a mother of three children currently enrolled in the Slate Valley Unified School District, I believe it is important to be involved with the local school community as well as participate in the enrichment of the school district itself. As an interim school board member, it would be my goal to support existing board members, help school district employees and educators thrive within the schools, and help focus decision-making in the best interest of all students. My desire to serve stems from a lifetime of respect for educators and the challenges they face. I grew up with parents who were both teachers and I saw firsthand how well-supported educators can make a positive difference. Over the past decade, I have worked as a substitute teacher spanning all grade levels as well as special education services. As a result, I have gained much respect for the work and effort that is needed from everyone involved, from the members of the school board to the administrators at the town hall, to the teachers and principals on the ground level with the students. I believe well-run schools need a wholly cooperative effort to thrive. Several years ago, I enrolled in several master level classes at Bay Path University in elementary education after graduating from Northeastern University with a bachelor's degree in journalism. I was originally interested in pursuing a graduate degree in education, but as our family grew, it made more sense for me to stay home to provide a stable and supportive environment for our young children. However, I never lost the passion for the importance of teaching and learning. I believe the training and development I received through those semesters will help me offer a unique perspective. I also think that experience has provided me with a good foundation for maintaining balance and cooperation with other board members while advocating for teachers as well as students, parents, and guardians. During my semesters at Bay Path University, many of my classes focused heavily on special education. I am very passionate about special education services and hope this position will give me the opportunity to advocate for students who need the most help. I plan to work with other board members to maintain a shared vision for positive learning, build strategic partnerships to help improve relations with school staff and parents, sustain the town's progress through continuous improvement, adopt and enforce current effective policies, maintain strong ethical standards, and objectively seek answers to questions and challenges as they arise. I understand budgeting is also a major aspect of the school board's responsibilities. As a manager of household budgets, as well as our family's wedding venue business, I understand the value and importance of maintaining resources responsibly. I understand I am relatively new to Slate Valley and I am looking forward to working within the school board and the community during this challenging time for public education nationwide. I believe education is an important aspect to the well-being and success of children and I plan to work hard to enhance that experience for all. I believe in facing challenges energetically and passionately while maintaining cooperative and empathetic relationships with colleagues and parents. Thank you for your time and consideration and I excitedly await your decision about this exciting opportunity and welcome any questions you may have. Please feel free to contact me with any further questions.
Thank you, do you have any questions for the school board?
Actually, unrelated, when you were discussing CLA earlier, I'm not familiar with that term and I was just curious if you could educate me on what that means because I was trying to follow along and I.
My favorite thing in the world is.
I would like to know, even if, even if I do not get to participate, I'm very interested in the information that you guys were providing tonight and I would like to know.
Sure, real quickly, CLA stands for Common Level of Appraisal.
Okay.
And it's basically kind of a calculation where you put the assessed value of properties within the town or the amount assessed on each person's tax bill. You put that in comparison to the value of the properties that are being sold in that town for a given year. So the selling price of the properties is the numerator, the assessed value is the, I might have that backwards. And it looks at three years' worth of data. And each town has its own CLA factor. If you were to Google it or go onto a State of Vermont website, you can see the CLA values for each of the towns. And that factor is applied to equalize tax rate to give you the final resulting homestead education tax rate for each town, so.
And that, it has an inverse effect. So in other words, you have your assessed value, if it sells under, the CLA goes up.
Okay.
Sells over, it goes down. Makes the up, makes the tax rate go down.
Right, okay.
The down makes, right, it's all inverse. So it's not straight across the.
I'll just think, one other point is the State of Vermont has a state-funded education system. So it's a component of that funding formula that deals with the value of property across all communities, right, State of Vermont.
Okay, thank you.
With all of that, I think you have a pretty good idea.
And you're aware that this is just through March?
Correct.
The beginning of March? And would it be your intent to get the signatures, to be on the ballot, to be voted in as a full-time member in March?
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions for Jamie? Go ahead.
All right, so you're aware of kind of the schedule that as of right now, till March, because in March, we do something called reorganize where we can talk about these things.
Yep.
But we meet twice a month.
Yes.
And then there are committee meetings before each meeting, for about an hour before each meeting. So just understanding the time commitment?
Yes.
To that, so 5:30, right, would be a committee meeting, 6:30 would be a meeting, and then it can go till however long the meeting lasts.
Yes, I would be able to commit to that.
Okay.
And there's three different committees at this point. There's finance, buildings and grounds, and policy.
And I'm sorry, what was the third one?
Policy.
Policy, okay.
And you can be up to two.
Okay.
Because policy and buildings and grounds meets at the same time.
Right. Fair enough.
Okay, moving on to our second applicant, Kathy, is that correct?
Yeah.
You want to just introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the position?
I'm Kathy Gearwar. I did not hear any of, any about this position from any of the places that Brooke listed. I heard about it word of mouth, very last minute. Tried to get something off Brooke on Friday before she wasn't working anymore for the weekend. So, but I had, I have lived in Benson for 30 years. Both my sons went through Benson, through Benson, then through this high school. And I also worked for Benson for 18 years as an instructionalist. I had always thought about that maybe when I got done working for the system that I would be interested in the school board. When I got done, of course, you know, it felt good to just take a few years off. So I wasn't actively looking, but then when I heard about it, I said, well, this is probably, yeah, probably the time, so I, this is why I've, but I, I support education. And like I said, I no longer, my kids are no longer in school and I no longer work there, so it made sense to continue down that avenue.
Do you have any questions for us, Kathy? Any questions from the board?
I hope you heard the time commitment, kind of, right?
Yes, and I had, and I had asked about it before, so I.
Okay, awesome.
I guess the same question for you, if you're appointed or even if you're not appointed tonight, would it be your intention to run for the seat in March?
Yes.
Anything else? Any other questions for either candidate, board members? All right, so what we'll do is we've got these pieces of paper. If you just want to write your, the candidate that you prefer, send them down to the middle. I'll tally them up, I'll let you know who has the most votes. And then I guess Julie can make a motion to appoint that individual through the remainder of the term. Toni, can you just text, do you have Brooke's phone number? Can you text for her vote?
Yes, I can.
On a timely basis, right?
Right now.
How can you receive? Wish I invented the sticky note.
You wouldn't be sitting here right now.
Right?
If you're on a beach.
I might be, John, I might still be sitting here. I think so too, and I love the big ones that stick on the wall, like those are the best. I just think sticky notes, that's a great invention.
Do I have everyone's vote?
I could go through a list, I wish I invented.
I'm pretty sure the sticky note was invented in Framingham. I think it was, yeah, I'm pretty sure, but I can't swear.
3M.
3M, I love it, yeah. That's cool.
All right, so there's 11 people attending tonight. There are 10 votes in favor of Jamie King and one in favor of Kathy. So Jamie will be our nominee. Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
I do beforehand, thank you both for your interest.
Thank you.
This is like, heartwarming to even know that there were two people out there that were interested in a position, so I was really pleased to have you both here. So thank you both for coming and taking that step of saying something in public about your intentions and such, so thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jamie King as the Benson rep for the school board.
Second. And I'd just say, Kathy, I mean, these are just 11 individuals. I certainly would encourage you to run and.
I'm feeling gonna hurt.
I would certainly encourage you to run and to be voted in by your town.
No, that was brave, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you both.
And if you have questions, you can always reach out to the board members from your town or other towns as well.
All right, all those in favor of appointing Jamie as our next board member, effective the first of the year from Benson through the end of the term, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, congratulations and thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number 12.
Somebody want to get Glenn?
You can stay and I'll reach out tomorrow with, you will have paperwork and stuff that you will need to get signed.
All right, so number 12, while we wait for Glenn to come back in, has to do with board terms and reconfiguration. So there's two parts to this conversation. The first part has to do about just looking ahead to this coming March when we do reorganize, just to kind of take stock of who's up for reelection and if that person intends on running again or if there could potentially be a vacancy. So just going through the list here quickly, Patty from Benson is up in 2024. I believe Patty expressed to me earlier this week that she intends to run again.
I do, and can I just ask a quick question? Because I don't know if other people are in the same boat. So I went to the town clerk's office today and our town clerk is relatively new to the position. And we're confused as to, once I get my signatures, you know, my big nine signatures that you need in Benson. But I gotta be careful.
I think I only needed six.
Oh, really? You know, and then they're somewhere else and I'm like, oh, shoot, that one's not valid anymore. But anyway, but she didn't know where I then bring that.
Back to her.
Back to her, and then, yeah.
Yeah, and then my admin assistant reaches out to the town clerk.
Okay, I bring it to her and then someone.
Now I'm gonna have a new admin assistant.
Make a photocopy, just in case she doesn't get the attachment right, because that's what happened to Sam.
Oh, okay, okay.
Patty would be applying for another three-year term. And then, you know, there's going to be an open seat that's being vacated by Karina. And if you were to run again, for example, Jamie, you would be running to fill the remaining two years of that term, for whomever.
Yeah.
So that's Benson. Castleton, Toni, I guess you're online, what are your intentions if you're?
As I, as I stated the beginning of this year, I am not going to run again. I have been on this board since its inception and I was on the Castleton Town Board before that. So I think it's time for someone younger and hopefully, someone who has kids in the school system to run.
So amongst the Castleton folks, certainly if there's anyone in the community that we feel might be of interest, certainly make them aware of the vacancy and talk to them about the benefits of serving your community.
I've talked to a couple of people, but not yet, haven't found one yet. But I'll continue.
Is that something that we can like advertise for on, you know, our Facebook, social media platforms?
Well, you can put out that there's going to be board member vacancies.
Can it go home in like the Thursday packet at individual schools or whatnot that is disseminated to family members?
Sure, sure, yeah. And there's a whole list on the VSB website, there's a whole list of resources to try to recruit board members as well, so that might. There's a whole list of resources to try to recruit board members as well, so that might be something, you know, certainly Lisa and I can take a look at, um, and, and put out there.
All right, Fairhaven, Tara's not here. I, I believe she's retiring from what she said.
Retiring.
So that would be a potential vacancy in Fairhaven, so Kurt and Chris, you know, look around town, see who you can drum up. Uh, Hubbardton, Christine is not here tonight. What have you heard from Christine?
I believe it's her intent not to run again. But I could be wrong on that.
I believe you're correct. I don't know that for sure.
I, not 100%, but that's what she said.
Brooke?
Yeah.
I have spoken with Christine and she is not going to run again.
All right, so you two.
You two.
Round somebody up? Um, and then Orwell, Peter, you're here tonight, what are your intentions, if I could ask?
I'm gonna run again.
You're gonna run.
Peter, all right.
Having too much fun.
All right, so if we do the math here, we have an 18-person board, minus three from West Haven, that's 15. You know, we've talked about potentially three vacancies, uh, you know, on March, so, you know, that's, that's 12 people, you know, we need 10 for a quorum. So I guess we just need to find some, some people who are willing to serve in these communities. Which leads me to the second part of this discussion, which is, um, our articles of agreement and potentially reconfiguring the makeup of this board. We talked about it a couple months ago in Benson, I presented a few scenarios. I didn't know if anyone else had any follow-up questions on that. You know, we talked about, you know, reducing each town by one, so it'd be six time, six towns times two for 12 total members. We talked about reducing each town to two and then reducing West Haven to one, which would be a total board of 11 members. Or we talked about potentially having the towns of Castleton and Fairhaven each having three. Benson, Orwell and Hubbardton, two, and West Haven, one, which would be a board of 13 people. You know, in my mind, this is something, if we wanted to move forward, we would potentially put out to vote, um, in, uh, November, potentially to coincide with a, a bond vote, if, if there is a bond vote. Uh, it's the presidential election, of course, and we could vote in November, you know, to take effect that next March. So when everyone runs again in March for that newly reconfigured board, we would know that it's our, the reconfiguration has already been approved, right? I remember when we first consolidated at Slate Valley, it was, you had to vote to adopt the consolidation and then vote in parallel for the board members to make up that board if the consolidation were to have passed. I was just thinking that doing the first part in November, getting a yea or nay vote there would then offer clarity to, um, people actually going out and getting their signatures and getting on the ballot for that reorganization in March, so.
Well, if you did that, you would automatically just, because there'd be one member from each town, because it's, it's staggered, so that one person that would have to run next year would automatically be gone.
Or they, wow, or they could run for two of, one of the other seats against somebody else.
Well, no, because they wouldn't be up for vote.
Well, you could.
It's not by attrition though, it's my understanding that everyone would have to run again.
Or run, everybody would run.
Start anew.
That's, that's what I was trying to clarify, is it, would everybody run anew? Or would we just say that that person running that year would be gone?
We can seek legal clarification on that, but I, I believe he, I believe he might suggest that everyone has to run again.
Yeah, makes sense.
Similar to what we did when we consolidated.
So then there wouldn't be a staggering.
No, one person would run for a three-year term, one person would run for a two-year term, so we would.
Oh, like the select boards?
What's that?
Kind of like the select boards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, eventually.
They'd eventually all be three-year terms, but that initial term, one person would have a three-year term, one person would have a two-year term, that's how you kind of build in that stagger.
And I think how we did it initially is whoever got the most votes out of that town was a three-year term.
I don't think so.
You don't think it was?
Oh, we ran for something.
You had to run? Okay, all right.
So what do you think, you have two people running for the three years and you don't have anybody for the two?
You have to talk amongst yourselves, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, because if two people file their petition for the, the three-year, it's, they're locked in unless somebody withdraws their petition before the end of that deadline.
Right.
Can you file for both?
Yep.
Well, I don't know about that. You know, I, I, I think we'll have to get some legal advice.
No, I guess, I just wanted to bring this back up for discussion. I mean, last we spoke, people were in favor of moving forward to explore the options. So I'm just bringing that back up in the context of how we reorganize in March, potentially for vacancies to continue to exist, uh, the November timeline. So we'll, we'll come back again with, um, some, some more answers from legal and some more options. But again, I guess I'm just wanting to hear from the body that we're still interested in kind of discussing this moving forward. Any questions, concerns?
I just, well, I don't know how many times, we, we need the legal answers about the running of it, but at some point we should just.
Make a decision.
Make a decision.
Okay.
You know, instead of, instead of talking about it, because we know we have, what we have to do.
Okay, well, it's not gonna happen this March, right? We don't have enough time.
Right.
Okay, so the next timeline or the next window would be November. So if we were to vote on this in November, from your perspective, when should we make a decision? To vote in November, sometime in early spring?
Yeah.
After, after March, after we reorganize?
Yeah, probably after March, after we get through the budget and everything.
Yeah, because that, that conversation could be predicated on who's on the ballot, right? If we have full three candidates or more than three candidates on the ballot, you know, for each one, then that's a different conversation than if nobody shows up.
Right.
All right, thank you. The next item is the listening tour, the road show, as Patty calls it, ready to hit the road.
Well, so what, Lisa and I, there's, um, a flyer in your packet that we, that we put in there about listening tours. And I guess what we're wondering is at this stage of the game, are we really doing listening tours or are we doing more coffee and conversations just at night? Because the original intent of listening tours was to ask for feedback in the budget process. The budget will already be approved, you know, by you all, by some of these dates.
I think it should be informational tours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, if they're, so if it's informational tours.
So, yeah.
January 10th and 11th, the budget won't be approved yet. So I, I guess I just want to understand, I think Lisa and I want to understand what the intent is.
Right.
If it's just coffee and conversations like we typically do and have them budget focused, I think we could do that. But if it's informational or if we're, if you're wanting to listen, I, I think these dates don't necessarily work with the intent, perhaps.
So our intent is to, to get the word out and to have dialogue with our community. Is that best accomplished in an informal coffee conversation at a restaurant or a general store? Or is it best accomplished by us sitting here in this library at virtual links? What's gonna, who?
No, I think in, I think in person at the local school, like, that, that was well, I thought those were well-attended. We just don't have to call them listening tours, but I like that idea and you can still serve a beverage.
Yeah.
It'd be like, I mean, maybe you don't want, maybe decaf coffee. You gotta be careful.
Or hot chocolate.
All right, so we'll have them in the schools.
I think having them in the schools.
Yeah, I think the school is better.
And it, I don't, I mean, I know we want to give them a name, but you want it to be informal, but you also want it to be informative. So you gotta kind of have that balance. I still would like to, I don't know if we need to give a presentation, but I think they need to know that it is focused, that it has some focus.
So it could just, it could be coffee and conversations around the budget, like focused on, on the budgeting process in Slate Valley and Act 127, and, and I, I, I don't know, I mean.
I mean, that brings out the people and the conversation can go in any direction.
Well, depends, right, yeah.
Budgets bring out the people.
Well, yeah, yes.
But I think right where, on the part where it gives the, the dates, take part in a school budget discussion with administrators and school board members. I mean, that pretty much says it all right there.
Right, it's just, you're approving the budget January 22nd.
Right.
So that's already gonna be set in stone, so if you're asking, I just want to be clear on the intent. Maybe I'm getting too in the weeds on that, but if you're, okay, all right. Because it, because you just don't want to give the appearance that you're asking for feedback when you've already made the decision on January 22nd. Yeah, that's the only thing.
So is it to inform what the budget is?
Yes.
That's what I would.
So then should they all be after?
The 22nd, and they shouldn't be January 10th and 11th.
That's what I'm just like, what information are you thinking you would be talking about?
The factors that went into the decision-making that, you know, the budget-making decisions.
Then I'm thinking the dates all need to be after the 22nd.
That's fine.
Okay.
It's fine, and of course we would do it a month later at the formal.
Yeah.
Uh, informational session, the, the, the Monday or Tuesday prior to town meeting.
As we had talked about making this more, whatever we were doing was more of a process conversation as opposed to specific number conversation, right? Julie, you had mentioned that, that.
Yeah, talking about.
You know, how we got to where it is and the why behind it.
And, and I can, and maybe I'm wrong, but I mean, I can see this being a time to try to explain the new, uh, pupil weighting as well as.
Right.
Really just try to show people the effects of, of CLA on the taxes.
Yeah.
Not so much a budget increase as that whole piece to deal with statewide property tax. And if your, if your numbers are outmated, you're gonna pay the penalty.
I mean, I think those slides, some of those slides that the, you know, AOE did were really good slides, very informative. And just going over a couple of those maybe might be something we could do.
So hopefully we can find a date, uh, a week after this or the same week.
Yeah, be the first weekend of February, yeah.
To reschedule Castleton and Benson.
Yep.
All right, so is everyone good with that?
Good, because I'm not gonna be here, so.
And that'll be in person plus a virtual link or just in person?
You tell us.
And you want, like, you would want me there and, I mean, or is it?
I don't, I don't.
Is it just four?
Yeah, I think, I, yeah.
You don't need to have you at five meetings, I mean, that's.
Well, that's why I'm trying to understand where.
No, I don't, I don't think.
I think in the past we've done talking points and given them to you, but then we also have gotten feedback. And the principals were at the meetings with you, but then we got feedback that you really wanted central office administration. So it's just a, a scheduling kind of.
And trying to understand, so like, what.
I don't think we need central office there.
Do you want any administrators there?
I don't know, I mean, I don't, I think that would be.
I don't think so.
No, I think that would be unique to the, to the board reps who would like them there. I mean, if there's, I'm just making this up, say there's three brand-new board members who are going to meet, they might want that support. You know what I mean? So I think maybe it could be an option, but it doesn't have to be.
I think when we did the.
So we'll put together supporting documents for you all and, okay.
I think then when we did the other, like, listening tours, um, like Amy came to Benson and kind of took notes over what had happened.
Right.
Correct, but then the feedback was that you wanted central office there, so. Yeah.
Well, I don't remember giving you that feedback.
Well, I think we should have bake sales at all of them so that kids have to come, so their parents have to come with them.
But, I mean, I, I see this as kind of answering a lot of my questions. And I think if people need more information, that's when you can really say, then please come.
Okay.
Exactly, yes.
In February or.
Oh, that's true.
First week of March for more in-depth, if you need more information.
You don't need a slideshow, Cheryl, for these.
Yeah.
Well, right, but just keep in mind, you don't have somebody on the finance committee necessarily in every town. I just want to make sure you're.
That's why I said, if they need something, they could ask.
If they show up, there's somebody from, from every town that's on the finance.
Okay, all right.
And I do think that we need some slides, I mean, I'm not saying we don't need any, any slides to back things up.
You would be with us anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll figure it out, we'll get it organized.
All right.
Thank you. I'm slotted. Don't worry, Lisa's a wizard at all of this, she'll, she'll get it figured out.
So item number 14 is the question about whether we have a, um, a board meeting, uh, next Monday, the 18th.
Yep.
So, um, if we don't feel that it's necessary, then we need a motion to, to cancel that meeting.
Correct, but I do think, um, we do need a building and grounds meeting and a policy meeting. And the thought is, even if you were to cancel the December 18th board meeting, the committee meetings, I think we still would like to move forward with, but we'd like to have them here at the high school because Chris would like to show, um, the building and grounds committee the renovation.
Do we need a board meeting?
I don't think you need a board meeting, but you need, yeah, I don't.
What time would the committee meeting start? 5:30?
5:30, unless you wanted to warn it for a special time and have to occur later, totally, totally up to you. Because it would be, they would be special meetings anyway because they're not occurring in the original location on the agenda, which was Orwell.
I think you should keep it at the same time though, because then everybody gets confused and somebody forgets and shows up at, you know, 5:30 when it's.
It happened to me.
Yeah.
It was at 5:00 and I showed up at 5:00.
At, at least you don't.
So we can make a motion for all three together?
Absolutely.
I make a motion that we don't have a board member, board meeting December 18th, but we have buildings and ground meeting and policy meeting December 18th at 5:30 here at the high school.
Oh, well said.
Second.
There was a second?
Julie. Somebody.
Any questions or discussion? All right, hearing nothing, all, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, number 15 is round two of public comment. Is there anyone here in person who has a public comment after hearing what we've discussed tonight? And again, turning to our virtual audiences, our public comment, so please unmute and identify yourself. All right, so number 16 is executive session for legal. Just a quick preview, there are, I guess, two active lawsuits against the school district, both raised by board member Curtis Hire. Uh, one is in regards to the release of some Form 500 forms. There was a judgment reached last week in favor of Mr. Hire. As a school board, we do have a recourse, we do have some options. We could agree and release those documents or we, we could appeal. That's one of the subject matters that we're gonna discuss in legal, uh, executive session. And then the other active lawsuit is a defamation lawsuit that Mr. Hire has levied against Brooke, myself and the collective school board. Uh, so that's something that we need to discuss within this executive session, um, you know, probable outcomes, costs, strategy, et cetera. You know, I guess at this time, Kurt, um, do you feel that it's appropriate that you participate in the executive sessions? Or do you feel?
No, I do not, well, all of them will involve me.
They will.
None will in, not involve me.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's just those two subject matters.
I will excuse and recuse.
Okay.
But I'd like to come back for the agenda building. So can somebody come get me?
Yes, and if there is action that we take regarding these two legal matters, I'd like you to be present to, to hear that vote. You can vote present or something to that effect, so we'll.
Yeah, and I think you have to do one and then the other. I think you have to come out of one.
Yes, you do, yeah.
And then do the other.
Yes, so we will.
Come, come get me after the first one.
So I would take a motion to go into executive session legal, the first matter being, um, the, the judgment regarding the Form, Form 500s.
So move.
Second, and who would you like attending?
Um, so Brooke and anybody else, Brooke?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
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 Okay, we are out of executive session after having discussed the first of our legal issues this evening. We do have action. Julie has a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appeal the final judgment ruling dated December 4th, 2023. We feel strongly that a minor child's educational record is protected by the Federal Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
Second.
Any discussion or question? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we're looking to go back into executive session for another ongoing legal matter.
Salute.
Second.
And Brooke, again, who would be included in that?
Um, you can just include the others.
Alright, to the superintendent only. All those in favor of going back into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
I will recuse and excuse.
Thank you.
Alright, we are now out of executive session when we discussed a legal issue regarding a defamation lawsuit brought by board member Curtis Hire. And there is no action to be taken subsequent to those discussions.
We have agenda building.
Alright, so we move on in our board meeting agenda, which is agenda building for the next meeting, which is now in January. So obviously, that'll be the height of budget season. The finance committee will have met prior to hopefully iron out some final details. Although the board won't be voting without that budget at that meeting. What else you got, in queue?
We'll have an update from policy and building and grounds